The board members? Do we do this individually, or?
Hi, Daniel A. for the chairman. I'm Solomon Wissler. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. Now, faithfully discharge the duties of mayor. According to vest of my ability. Thank you.
Hi, Benjamin J. Arnold. Dussault Wissler. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee. According to my vest of my ability.
Hi, Tom Sandara. Dussault Wissler. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee. According to vest of my ability.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank trustee Moore for the duties he performed as deputy mayor. He goes without a lot of thanks, but he always has to be ready to take over. He was and remains that way. And thank you for giving that meeting open for us. Pleasure to be here and humbled by the score of voters, as I'm sure my fellow trustees are, and hope to keep this village in fine shape as it's in. And the quality of life we have is excellent. I'd like to see it remain that way, and with your support, help we can do that. So at this time, I'd like to ask if we have any comments from the public? If you'd like to make one, please state your name and tell us what you'd like to talk about. You have five minutes to do so. No comments from the public? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on. We're nearing the end of the previous meeting. I need a motion to accept the minutes.
I need a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting, October 21st.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, next, we have correspondence. Oh, let's do bills next. Would you rather read letters than paper? Okay. We'll go through the bills. Uh, let's see.
There's no additions or revisions. Make a motion to pay the bills.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. All right, now, let's find the correspondence.
The first letter I have is dated February 1st, 2016, and it is from Time Warner Cable. Dear Mayor Rivers, Time Warner Cable is pleased to provide cable television service to the Village of Rousas Point. We previously notified you of our intent to renew the cable television franchise pursuant to the section 626-H of the Cable Act. Enclosed is our revised draft franchise agreement, including the notice of public hearing and resolution, which will serve as the basis of our negotiations. Please be aware that the New York State Public Service Commission requires that this agreement be submitted to them in the time we may. We value our relationship with all our franchise officials and look forward to a successful conclusion of this franchise renewal of the village. Please feel free to contact with any questions regarding David J. Whalen.
Okay, we'll need a motion for a public hearing on this matter, so if you have that.
Motion to have a public hearing on it. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Uh, how about the next, or a date for that public reading?
April 18th, because it'll happen the next morning evening.
We need a further motion for that, or we're all set? Just as a side comment on this, we don't have the, in our books, we don't have the active lease agreement. And I think in discussing this with the clerk and Time Warner Cable paid, their lease pays so much for use of poles and so much for deep conduit. And do you know, we don't have very many clothes left in the village. Birdie yourself, come on in that area. So we're going to have to look closely at the agreement to see, you know, what it entails and if we have to alter that at all and make sure the public's aware of that agreement.
The other thing that I had a question on, Dan, was, you know, I don't know if it's covered under the Federal Communication Act or not, but it says it is for television service. It doesn't say anything about phone service or internet service. We may need to look into that.
Yeah, I think we should. We should probably determine if they have to put that, you know, per FCC or whatever, or if they have to put, it includes offering both telephone and serving as an internet service provider. Put that on our to-do list, Madam Clerk, okay?
And I will be copies and agreeance to all the board members.
Okay, great.
Okay, next, I have a letter from Tom Dart. Dear Ms. Boehmell, I wish to resign from the Village zoning board. This resignation is effective March 31st, 2016. And I do need a motion for that to accept the resignation.
Need a motion to accept the resignation of trustee Dart from the zoning board of appeals.
Make a motion. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And next, I have a letter from Dan Letturno. Dear Ms. Boehmell, please accept my resignation from the Rousas Point zoning board of appeals, effective immediately. I am taking this action following my election as mayor of Rousas Point. I first statute cannot be a zoning board appeals member while serving as an elected village official. Especially submitted, Daniel H. Letturno.
Need a motion to accept that resignation?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
And lastly, this correspondence came in this morning, late this morning, and it is from Lisa Turner, who is the supervising public health educator from Clinton County Health Department, and Jan Letturno, recreational leader of Village of Rousas Point. Dear Rousas Point Village Board members, we have been advised by Karen Derusha of the Clinton County Health Department that funding is available through their Healthy Neighbors Fund Initiative Grant for developing sustainable physical activity opportunities for an underserved group in Rousas Point. In order to solidify this funding, we have to identify a need and a plan and a project that meets disqualifications. After receiving community feedback from a variety of sources, including emails and one-on-one conversations, we have come up with a proposal that we feel will encourage physical activity across a wide spectrum of ages. This project could be implemented using a multi-stage approach and would be developed using grant monies at no cost to the village. Stage one, create a connector path at the Rousas Point Civic Center. This path would extend from an existing path, paved path near the playground area, along the north and east sides of the soccer and softball fields and connect with the current path near Veterans Park. This extension would be approximately one-third mile long and would create a perimeter path around the recreation center of approximately one mile. Stage two, installation of fitness-style equipment along the walking path to create a fitness trail or playpockets. This equipment could range from Adirondack-style timber products to conventional steel and molded plastic, as well as a combination thereof. Markers would be placed along the trail to provide instructions on using the equipment and to indicate distances for measuring progress. Stage three, incorporate benches, trash receptacles, and landscaping along the path. As growing attention is being paid to the health and wellness of our nation and communities, we feel this plan encourages increasing activity for a majority of our residents. We would be adding a safe-walking option for village residents and visitors, as well as improving access to the sports fields. Provide simple fitness equipment to improve balance, cardiovascular health, and core stability. Provide community service and gardening opportunities to groups interested in supporting and beautifying the largest recreational area in our village. We are asking for your approval of this proposal so that we may proceed with applying for this grant money. Once we know what monies we have been awarded, we can move forward with completing the project within the finances available. Thank you for your consideration, and please let us know if you have any questions or concerns regarding this proposal. Sincerely, Lisa Turner and Jan Letturno.
Who would be doing the work?
That's, I can tell you now, we're going to have one of these two, probably both of them, at the next board meeting, to answer your questions and to give a proposal. Basically, what they're looking at is extending the walkway that's here all the way around and putting little fitness stations in. It might be balance games, it might be sit-ups, pull-ups, whatever. But it is fully funded. I think in the funding includes the installation. I'm sure that you're going to get this out and email everybody, as well as the press release. It'll give you a couple of weeks to look at it, talk about it, and come up with questions. They'll be here to answer it in two weeks.
And that's all I have.
All right, so I have two reports now. I'd like to make appointment for 2016, 2017. But I wonder, are all done and made a motion to accept all of the appointments, regardless individually? For Deputy Mayor, Licker Point John A. Maugh. Deputy Treasurer, Rebecca Pelkey, to a one-year term. Our Village Attorney, Thomas Mernay, for a one-year term. Acting Village Justice, Curtis Latremore. Budget Officer, Arseno Letturno, one-year term. Historian, Don Racine, one-year term. Library Board Trustee, Don Racine, five-year term. Planning Board Chairperson, John Cooper, one-year term. Planning Board Viceperson, Tom Baffa, one-year term. We have an opening for a planning board member. So far, we haven't had anyone come forward. I'm going to like to volunteer, certainly welcome to do so at any time. Contact any of us or the village clerk. Village Engineer, Doug Ferris, one-year term. Our Depository Funds, TV Bank and Champlain National Bank. Our official newspaper is the Press Republic. At the present time, we have three zoning board of appeal member openings and one zoning board of appeals alternate that needs to be filled. With my resignation, trustee Dart's resignation, and leaves, Ms. Patricia Burkett as the chairperson, and Karen Thorne as the only member. We don't have a forum yet for that zoning board, so we need at least one more member. So if any of you are still inclined and would like to do it, please definitely go and talk to your friends. If you know of anybody that would be interested, you'd certainly like to do it. As you can see, as we go along here, it's getting more and more difficult to find people to staff both of these boards. So we're going to have to, you know, come up with some way to do this. And I'm not sure what, I'm certainly open to any suggestions as we move through this. Also, we have two EMS advisory board delegates. Or excuse me, one delegate and one advisory board alternate. Those are both one-year terms, and they remain unfilled. And we don't have volunteers for that, and we're probably contacting people, but anybody that we can think of has an interest in that, who has an interest in that, we certainly will honor mine, so please call us. There's one other nomination I'm going to recuse myself of making, and that's for you, Commissioner. I think the correct term is Recreation Leader. I'm recusing myself, but it's my wife. She's been doing the job for 10 years, I can tell you that. So I'm going to ask the deputy mayor if he would be interested in making that appointment.
Yes, Jan Letturno is going to be the Recreation Leader.
Okay. One year. Okay, I need a motion to accept the appointments out of the name.
Make a motion to accept the mayor's appointments.
Any discussion? Yeah, it's two-year term, just like the treasurer. Won't be till next year.
Okay, what about the village administrator?
That's not, she, that's a contract position, a competitive position. Other questions? Any discussion? Okay, we have a, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No offense carried. Not for mayor or commission appointments? Under public, for public safety, police, and judicial, fire, and codes, nominate John Maugh as the chairperson and Harold Moore as the co-chairperson. Public works, streets and sidewalks? Trustee Moore and trustee Dart. Trustee Moore, chairperson, trustee Dart, co-chairperson. The water system, trustee Moore, the chairperson. Trustee Arnold is co-chairperson. The sewer system, trustee Moore, as chairperson. Trustee Maugh as co-chairperson. The electrical system, chairperson, trustee Arnold. Co-chairperson, trustee Maugh. Flood control, storm sewers, chairperson, trustee Dart. Co-chairperson, trustee Moore. Administration, on the personnel and insurance, trustee Dart as a chairperson, trustee Arnold as a co-chairperson. In the planning and development, trustee Maugh as a chairperson, trustee Arnold as a co-chairperson. In the culture and recreation, civic center, parks, beautification and shade trees, trustee Maugh. Co-chairperson, trustee Dart. Library historian, seniors, you, welcome to the history center. Chairperson, trustee Arnold. Co-chairperson, trustee Dart. Need a motion to accept these commission appointments? Well, something a little note to me here, motion to accept.
On your sequel, who's doing that? Does that come down to planning and development? Up on fire and code?
Yeah, S-E-Q-R, seeker, that goes down under planning and development. Thank you for pointing that out. I can live with that. We think that this appointment is not for, not for in our center.
Not for barrel appointments?
All right. I'm not going to say who put this here. I'm just going to say, you don't need that. I probably wrote that in there by mistake, or must have been. All right, the next thing we have in your packet, the rules of procedure for public meetings. For trustees, Village of Rousas Point. This is, this is accepted initiative through December 7th, 1998, and we're reviewing it tonight. Regular meetings, we're going to hold those on the first or third Monday of each month. Except that Monday falls on a nationally recognized holiday. In this event, the meeting shall be on the following Tuesday. Meeting's commenced at 7:00. We conduct the hospital hall at the civic center. The trustees, if you have any, if you want to change anything from that foregoing paragraph, bring it up when we have to discuss it. Special meetings, the mayor and trustee, upon notice, the entire board may call special meetings. Notice shall be given by telephone, in person, or in writing to the board. The clerk will poke on the door, or if possible, the library or village office, at the meeting being held in the time. To defy a forum, it has to be required to conduct business. Forum of five-member boards shall be three. An absent form of less than a number may adjourn and compel the attendance of absent members. So we come dragged by the hospital. That's, that's why we're doing it. Executive sessions, executive sessions shall be held in accordance with New York State Public Officers Law, Chapter 105. All executive sessions shall be commenced in a public meeting. In your folders, you will find a listing of the reasons why we can go into executive session. They're very limited. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's eight matters which have to be discussed in executive session. Other than that, we need to discuss it here in public. We are, we are not having a public meeting, but we're having a meeting in public. And the open meetings law says this is where we do it. So sometimes, even if it's not comfortable, if it's not covered by those, one of those eight subject areas, maybe we should go over them, we have to discuss it in open reading. Day areas are matters which, if disclosed, will imperil the public's safety, matters which may disclose the identity of a law enforcement agent or informer, information regarding current or future investigations or prosecutions of criminal offense which would imperil effective law enforcement if disclosed, discussion of proposed, pending, or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to the Taylor Law, which pertains to public employees, the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, preparation, grading, or administration of examination of proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities, or sale, or exchange of securities held by the public body, but only when public publicity would substantially affect the value thereof. That's it. There's no other reason. And we're going to, we're going to stick to that law and, you know, follow it faithfully. Agendas, prepare the directions of the mayor and trustees. The mayor and/or any trustee may have an item placed on the agenda. We'd like to have them given to the clerk or deputy clerk by Friday and prior to the regular meeting night. However, items may be placed on the agenda anytime, including during the meeting, if needed. A supplemental agenda will be prepared on a day. Public meeting, if the information is given, clerk may leave at 1:00 P.M. Voting, pursuant to the village law, each member of the board shall have one vote. The mayor may vote on any matter, but must vote in case of a tie. Majority of the totally authorized voting power is necessary to pass a matter unless otherwise specified by state law. An abstention by a trustee, because the mayor does have to vote, and he can't abstain in case of a tie. An abstention, silence, or absence shall be considered a negative vote for the purposes of determining the final vote on a matter. Vote upon any question shall be taken by ayes and nays, and the names of the members present in their vote shall be entered in the minutes. Minutes shall be taken by the clerk, and his or her absentee deputy clerk shall take over this task. They shall consist of a record or summary of all motions, proposals, resolutions, and any other matter formally voted upon and the vote thereon. Minutes shall be taken to the executive session of any action that is taken by formal vote, which shall consist of a record or summary of the final determination of such action and the date, vote thereon. Provided, however, that such summary may not include any matter which is not required or made public by the New York State Freedom of Information law. Minutes shall also include the following, the name of the board, date, place, and time, notation of presence or absence of board members, time of arrival or departure, if different from the time of call and order, name and title of other village officials and employees present, record of communications presented to the board, record of reports made by the board or other village personnel, time of adjournment, signature of clerk or person who took the minutes. Minutes shall not contain verbatim comments unless a majority of the board shall resolve to have a clerk do so. Minutes shall be approved at the next board meeting. Amendments to the minutes shall require a board approval. Order of business, common order, comments from the public, roll call, approval of minutes, bills, and approval for payment, correspondence, reports from mayor and trustees, reports from other village officials, open meeting to the public, and adjournment. General rules of procedure, the mayor shall preside at the meetings, and the mayor's absent, deputy mayor shall preside. The presiding officer may debate, move, and take other action that may be taken by other members of the board. Board members are not required to rise, but must be recognized by the presiding officer before making motions and speaking. Although, this says motions no longer require a second. This is from New York Conference of Mayors. And although motions no longer require a second, past practice for the offspring of those aboard has then require a second for discussion to ensue. I'd like you guys to consider that when, as that amendment to this, to this particular statement. A member once recognized shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it is to call him or her to order. Remember, while speaking, be called to order, they shall cease speaking until a question of order be determined, and if an order is received, shall be permitted to proceed. There is no limit to the number of times a member may speak on a question. Motions to close a limited debate may be entertained, which shall require a two-thirds vote. Guidelines for public comment, the public shall be allowed to speak only during the public comment period of meeting. Speakers may step to the front of the room. They must give their name, address, and organization, if any. They must be recognized by the presiding officer. They must limit the remarks to five minutes on a given topic. And they may not yield any remaining time, and they have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any member thereon. Speakers shall observe and accommodate such rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. They shall refrain, this is an addition, they shall refrain from addressing complaints or comments about a particular employee or official. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communications. All members of the public and all public officials are allowed to tape or video-record public meetings. Recording is not allowed during executive session. Recording should be done in a manner which is not interfering with the meeting. The mayor may make the determination that the recording is being done in an intrusive manner, taking into consideration, but not limited to, brightness of lights, distance from the deliberation of the village board, size of the equipment, and the ability of the public to still participate in the meeting. The mayor makes the determination that the recording is intrusive and has the effect of interfering with the meeting, the mayor may request an accommodation to avoid interference, and if not complied with, may ask the individual to leave the room. Readings are to be adjourned by motion, and the foregoing procedures may be amended from time to time by a majority of the board. So this is open to amendment at any time. If you want to bring it back up, or you find something wrong there. So I would ask for a motion to accept these procedures as read with the amendments. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The rules of procedures for entering into executive session and what we should do. We talked about what we, what matters need to be discussed in executive session. How we go into it? It may only be entered into from a properly noticed open meeting. So in other words, we can't decide we're going to have an executive session, and I'll need it to the village office and everything. We have to come from an open meeting and go into executive session. Motion entered in executive session. Motion entered in executive session must be made during an open meeting. Person making the motion must specify the subject areas which qualify for the executive session. At its discretion, the public body may, via majority vote in the board, allow any person or persons to attend an executive session. So, in other words, if you think a particular person needs to be there to answer questions being discussed, you can request that they be, the board will vote on it whether or not they want to, or they can come in. There's an opportunity to open. A public body may vote in executive session on any above- referenced issues. It may discuss, not discuss, or vote on any matter that is not the subject of the motion for what we went into. We're going to discuss, uh, something that will imperil the public safety, we can't then talk about the background of the board there. Okay, so we, we have to stick very close. And if an executive body takes any action by formal vote while in executive session, minutes must be taken. The executive session minutes do not contain the contents of the discussion, but must include a record, including the date and vote of any final determination. If no action is taken while in executive session, minutes are not required, although public officials may wish to know in a minute that no action was taken in the executive session. Unlike minutes of regular, open meetings, executive session minutes must be made available to public within one week of the executive session. Executive session minutes may be taken by a member of the public body, or the body may choose to allow the clerk to present take minutes. All right, uh, next, we have our public notice for our schedule of regular meetings. They are, as I said, the first and third Mondays, except for the holidays. You'll have a, uh, notice of when they are. May 27th, we have tree in May, you see, that's the end of the fiscal year. That's a Friday at 4:00 p.m. That's the, the only, uh, thing that we have that's a very basic protocol we've set. And that's why it's, that's what that third meeting is for. And that meeting will be at the village office at 139 Lake Street. So, looking at that, I need a motion to accept the public notice for the schedule of regular meetings for 2016, 2017 year.
Motion accepted.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. We need a resolution, uh, whereas the board of trustees, this is about rate for mileage, whereas the board of trustees of the village of Rouse's Point have determined to pay a fixed rate per mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their personal automobile while performing their official duties on the absent village. Therefore, be it resolved, the board of trustees shall approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate of forty-two cents per mile. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The question of the foregoing resolution was duly put to vote on roll call, which resulted as follows, and, uh, clerk, you'll take the roll call, or do I take it?
You take it.
Okay, trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Ma? Mayor votes aye. All right, you have received information about the webinars that are through the New York Conference of Mayors. It's available for the mayor, the board, administrator, and the clerk. Roles and responsibility of municipal officials, the open meetings law, local government, finance, ethics, and civil service essentials. The cost is fifteen dollars for each of these webinars, not per person, but for the webinar itself, total of sixty dollars. Our village clerk has arranged for it to take place at the Goss Moore Library from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m., and it'll be projected on screen, so we can, uh, we can attend. So, I need a motion to approve, uh, registration for these webinars.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have the opportunity to have, uh, our, our village clerk, uh, certify as a notary public, submit a memorandum to the board, reads as follows, I request permission to enroll in a notary public seminar, which is a notary, notary public test prep seminar. Once the seminar is completed, I will undertake the notary public exam on May 10, 2016, at 1:30 p.m. in Plasmat. The cost is twenty-nine dollars for the seminar, fifteen dollars for the exam, sixty dollars for the application, plus a total of a hundred and four dollars. The administrator has conferred that she feels it would be a good idea, as do I. I think it's necessary to have a notary on site. I would have a motion to approve the village clerk's attendance, uh, at this notary public course and her taking the exam.
Make a motion on notary public course. Can you say it?
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, next item is, uh, a travel authorization form. Uh, we, as you know, one of them came out a little while ago, and we've had tuned it up a little bit. The top stays pretty much the same. As you can see, it identifies a traveler, uh, the department's account number, where they're going, where they're leaving from, when, the purpose of the trip, how they're gonna get there, to estimate their expenditures. Uh, the traveler submits this, the department head signs off on it, the treasurer certifies that funds are available for this travel, the administrator or myself will approve it, and the village clerk will date it. At this time, it's been practiced to then wait for the next board meeting to have the entire board approve the travel. What I'm asking is that this form takes care of making sure that the department head knows the person in traveling approves it, and it's not going to adversely affect them. We know that the funds are available, the administrator approves it, uh, or I do checking on it. I would like to simply notify the board of the travel that was approved. This allows the clerk to make the reservations a big way. Sometimes she has to wait two weeks, and in cases where conferences are at hotels, sometimes the hotel gets too booked up, and she has to book at another hotel, and you have to travel back and forth. It's not meant to take any approval authority away from anybody here in the board, or the board in the whole, but I think we have to trust our department heads, our administrator, and our treasurer to tell us that their department will run fine, their employee needs it, we have the funds, and they should go. Keep us in the loop. Whichever department goes, the chairperson will report that, um, to us at the, at the following meeting. So, I would like, uh, motion to accept this authorization, the travel form, and to, to inform the board of the travel rather than ask for approval.
I'll make a motion to, uh, have the form amended to the mayor's detail in to, uh, accept it.
Number second. Second. Discussion.
Any training?
Any travel.
Any travel.
Yeah.
Six months, you know, whatever it's.
Well, they, they will have to submit the form ahead of time, and each department has, has their budget.
Correct.
They'll look at their travel budget, their training budget, see if they, if they think they have it, uh, and it won't, it's not at a time when that, that department particularly needs people there, you know, it's not really like.
But it's not okay unless you're sure there's money there.
Oh, yeah. It has to be cert, the funding has to be certified by the treasurer. If the treasurer says, "Sorry, there's no money, I'm gonna go."
I think it'd be a great idea, but I think the commissioner of that department should be allowed to give a yes or no. I mean, what if somebody was to say, "You're gonna go to Florida to somewhere"? The board has no control over that.
Well, the, the department head certainly would, and the administrator or myself, in that case, um.
Has to sign off on it.
Yeah, absolutely, administrator, but, and, I would, I, you know, if there's a case where it sounds outlandish, you know, I'm gonna question it and talk to the chairperson of that department and the whole board more likely. I mean, this doesn't mean we can't stop it. It doesn't mean that the administrator can't say, "No, how about the board to look at this? If it's really outlandish, or if it's something that's."
It's just a stream.
Right, right. This just allows things to, to be streamlined.
Move on with that.
But if there is an issue that's gonna require, you know, we're gonna know. If it doesn't smell right, we'll all get a chance to take a look at it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Did we get a second on that?
Yep.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Uh, we also have the, well, this is, the municipal employees' fertility association annual meeting, uh, semi annual meeting is coming up, uh, in Syracuse, and at the present time, the administrator and I are planning on attending, um.
Who signed your favor?
Well, that's just a, I can, the mayor can approve it. It's a, it's a, you're being made aware of it now. The, the, uh, the nature of this particular meeting, uh, is administrative, and it's gonna, obviously, we both have to, George was a strong president, Mayor Rogers was a strong presence in, in this before, and was well versed in it, and I think it's important that I get up to speed, and, as well as Gene continuing to, to be there. And, uh, if there are issues that, if there are meetings about technical issues or training, you know, I would ask our public board supervisor to go, uh, to handle that, not, because I don't know, there's three and four days and a light bulb, so, uh, you know, we wanna, wanna have that done, but, right? So, the administrator and I will be, uh, attending that semi annual meeting, the information you have on there. Okay, we have, we'll go with this. A request for approval for Tom Batha, planning board member, to attend the 2016 Adirondack Park Local Government Conference on April 14, 2016. The cost is now eighty-six dollars and sixty cents. Can you tell me why it was reduced from a hundred and fifty dollars?
The hybrid is now available. We weren't sure if the hybrid was gonna be available, if he was gonna have to drive his course, it'll be available. So, the hybrid is available, so there'll be no mileage.
Right. So, again, I mean, we've approved it, the travel, uh, portion that we talked about, and, uh, you know, we'll, we will make sure that the funding is available. We have to do, uh, as you know, planning and going board members have got four hours a year, so this would be, uh, this would be, this travel for that, um, take the village, village.
Mr. Mayor.
During, during public comment, we can have it. Will we not have the question?
There's no public comment at the end of your sheet?
Well, I will not, but there's not, there's many discussions during meetings.
Well, this is pertaining to what we're doing here.
We're doing it.
Look at the back of your sheet.
I'm looking at the back of my sheet, there's nothing.
Okay, what, this meeting is going on, and our discussion, at the end of the meeting, I'll ask for public comment, and you will be free to comment at that time.
But if you pass it, so you can send somebody.
You'll be free to comment at that time.
To send somebody, how can you resend it?
There's no more discussion, Mr. Cooper. This is not a discussion, this is not a public meeting, this meeting in public, at the end of it.
This is not a public meeting.
No, this is a meeting in public. Okay, the next motion, the next item. This is regarding the lease agreement with the Delaware and Hudson Railroad Company.
Excuse me?
Do you guys have the opportunity to read this letter from, uh, her name?
Yes, we do.
Okay, you all have a.
Do we need a motion to send this to Batha?
No, we don't.
We're gonna just pace it off.
Right, you already have the approval for the travel, you don't need to.
Sorry.
Okay, um, you all have a picture of this, a diagram of this, uh, that the village party, of the parking area that's referred to in, uh, paragraph two, property. Attached to the lease agreement is this copy of a sketch plan that shows the parking area, which the lease is in the D and H. I would ask you to reduce and confirm that you understand the area that's being leased.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Just trustee Moore brought it up earlier as well, and I guess they kind of have the same question. I don't think I've ever saw more than five cars there. Are we gonna have a fifty-five car parking lot? I know, I know this is gonna be a sore subject to a lot of people, but why do we need a parking lot that big?
Well, it's had a discussion.
It's gonna have to be maintained and plowed and. I mean, if I could renew it for free now, why would we on the lease?
The village hasn't had any fast action on this at all, put this document on? We've always, people have always assumed it.
Correct. As far as I know, it's never been.
I would like to ask the treasurer, do we have a lease agreement that we whipped the D and H at this time for parking? No. So, this is something new.
Correct.
A link to, uh, that George brought up. Apparently, we were supposed to buy this property, but they don't want to sell it, they'll lease it to the village.
So, right now, we don't even have a legal parking spot for one car. The building that we own, does it go with any parking at all?
Right, yes, it does.
It's supposed to be built, yes.
What George pertaining to do is to rent the, the parking lot that's not Tarnax, over to man or drive.
So, right now, we own the parking lot that, that's.
That's there, the Tarnax, part of the Tarnax.
We can see, yeah, you can see on here where it says convey to the village of Rouse's Point Artist, nineteen twenty-two. Now, is the footprint of the building in that?
No, no, falls behind the red lines.
That's squared by the rail tracks, so.
Well, let's, let's go through, well, let's read through the rest of this and see what it says, and see if it have any more, any more discussion. Uh, paragraph three determines initial leases for a period of ten years. There is a provision in paragraph three, see, which allows three additional terms of five years each, so that's twenty-five years. Paragraph four indicates the rent will be twelve hundred dollars per year. Paragraph states there is a three percent increase in base rent each year during a term of the lease. For the period, the rent would be due on February 1st of each year, and we would have to clarify that in the lease agreement. In addition, you are required to pay all taxes and other charges related to the leased property. I don't know whether this property is taxed, but that is an issue that we need to investigate.
Plus, we'd have to have it short, we'd have to put a, not short, somebody that knows it, about that. We want less, that less than five million dollar insurance on.
Right.
All right, well, we'll kind of go fast and read through this, and then we can have a motion to, uh, to discuss it, move on. Under the lease agreement, you are responsible for all utilities related to the property. This may not be an issue since it's vacant land. These noted in paragraph three, there's a late charge of one percent per month on any rent not paid timely. I would request a short grace period for the payment of the same fifteen days. Village office responsible for any attorney fees and other costs incurred by CP in, that's Canadian Pacific?
Yep.
In enforcing their rights under the lease agreement. Under termination, I would ask you to review the termination, restoration, and surrender line as under paragraph five, if you're familiar with same. Paragraph six, permitted or prohibited uses, appears that the only permitted use of this property is as a parking lot. This is not the case, please advise. Paragraph seven, covenants, conduct, and responsibilities under this paragraph. You are responsible for keeping the premises clean, safe, and free from luxuries, and also, for all, nor will we remove a degree from the property. In addition, you are not allowed to release any hazardous substances on the property. Paragraph nine, insurance is required that you provide for commercial, general liability insurance policy to the limit of not less than five million dollars. In addition, you are also required to carry an unobvial public liability and property damage policy in an amount not. hesitate to contact and assign. Thank you for your kind attention, Thomas Renee. This, at this point, it seems to me we have a lot of questions, and I'm not sure that the motion would be to approve and authorize a mayor to sign this lease, and I'm not sure that, that we have all the information that we need to have in order to do that. We can postpone working on this until we get further information, we get our question answered. I think we're gonna have a particular discussion about the items you guys think are, well, trustee Ma first brought up, do we need this for parking?
Well, my point is, and I know many's involved in that, how, how, what's the most vehicles you've ever seen there at one time?
Probably fifty, fifteen, eighteen vehicles.
And do you see the need for a fifty-five car parking lot?
No.
That's my only point.
As of, as of right now, the people that live in the yellow house east of the Manor Drive, they take a park there. There's two or four cars that park there, and that's part of the land that you're gonna lease.
Okay, and it says that we can't use it for anything other than parking. So if there was going to be a, an old Holmes Day in Rousas Point, and one of the surrounding around there, we couldn't set up booths on that parking lot, according to this, right? That's my interpretation of this. Also, we've, I, have we investigated the cost of the two insurance policies that are listed down here? Do we know what they will cost?
I don't know.
You haven't looked at it? Okay, I, we don't have enough information to...
By the table at the end of the meeting.
But we're gonna, we will postpone this item until...
No, G has been involved in this.
Until we have further information on it, as you go along, you can see that the whole agreement is in there, and I think we need to find out bottom line what it's gonna cost the village to do all this. I mean, we just, we don't know what the answer is right now.
Did we have intention of paving that parking lot? Does anyone know?
No.
You're just gonna leave it blocked, dirt.
There's nothing in the, there's nothing that I saw in the, in the lease agreement that says anything about paving.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question. Did either one of the past trustees know how we got into this and why we're doing this?
That was on before I came on board to start. Well, I don't, and you said G has been involved, but so she's probably got more information than...
All right, so this will be postponed until, please put it as an agenda item on the next board meeting. Okay, and finally, we, we have, this is, I don't know, I think, the attorney agreement with Renee for 2016, 17, he's been appointed as a village attorney. I would need a motion to authorize, authorizing me to sign this agreement, formalizing his, his rates, his, and other items in the contract. He wants to go through a, he can do that, payment contract term, the village agrees to pay contract for a hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour out of, out of court work, and two hundred dollars per hour for in court work, professional services performed April 1st, 2016 through April 1st, 2017. The scope of the services, I'll advise the village, the board trustees, the mayor, the treasurer, the clerk, and other village employees and entities, as requested, on such questions, the law procedure as may be referred to him by such body or officer. I'll attempt to schedule village board meetings when requested. In event he's unable to attend such meetings, I'll provide another lawyer from his firm to attend. Represent, you will provide representation of legal actions brought in county court, New York State, Supreme Court, or other court of general appellate jurisdiction. Services associated directly with the interpretation, enforcement, and/or revision of the village's zoning ordinance or its zoning laws, and all other legally related services assigned by the village. In addition to the payment for services rendered, the village will pay or reimburse him for the following expenses. Mileage for travel outside of Clinton County at the rate of fifty cents per mile. Please note that that's above our rate, but in his contract, that's a redemption form. Reasonable expenses for home net lodging, and the overall performance services of the village. Fees for services in legal process, court, filing fees, witness fees, and other such costly charges as are reasonably necessary in pursuit of contracts or treaties, or may be included upon lawful directions of the village board trustees. Neither party may terminate this agreement upon thirty day written notice, the other party reasons. This is, you know, very similar to what it, what it's been.
It's straightforward, yeah.
Those are the rights or anything.
Would there be a rate increase, do you know? I imagine a rate increase, so it's...
Twenty-five dollars an hour. For both out of court and... There's your answer. I need a motion to authorize me to sign this agreement binding Mr. Renee as the village attorney.
I'll make a motion to allow you to sign it.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. His name has come up several times when I've been sitting on that side of the desk, and it seems like the board hasn't all been, always satisfied with his services in connection with getting back to us any prompt and speedy matter. Is this somebody we wanna continue doing in business with?
Well, I'm just telling them they're all, they're all the same way.
But also, we switched the form, they're the same.
In my opinion, no.
That's all I have.
Question I got says fifty cents per mile travel outside Clinton County. What's he want for inside? Nothing, or?
Correct.
Nothing for inside? Okay.
Does anybody drive a tractor up here?
He doesn't get miles, he doesn't get miles.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. All right, reports, trustee Moore.
Just one thing, the fire truck is all set to go, it's all lettered, it looks very nice, so you don't pick it up anytime.
They have received their other truck and...
Not yet, but it's all lettered, they lettered it down there, and it's, as soon as we get a time to go pick it up, or if we're gonna not pick it up.
So we couldn't pick it up till May 1st?
Probably said, now it's lettered, they don't wanna rustle a fire truck sitting in Pennsylvania, so.
First, let's put your truck. It's a second pump, right? We're crushing the old pumps.
That's all I have.
All right, trustee Ma?
I have nothing.
Trustee Dart?
I have nothing this time, ma'am.
Trustee Arnold?
Up to the railroad station, we have two rough, we have two pieces of slate that's sliding off on the railroad side, and it's pretty dangerous. Somebody, if they slide off and somebody's walking by, then somebody's gonna get...